I'd like to call the City Commission meeting to order, Marine City, Fire Hall, 200 South Parker. Regular meeting Thursday, March 15, 2018, 7:00 PM. Can we have a moment of silence for our duly departed? And the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Van Nuys.
Here.
Commissioner Avery.
Here.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Here.
Commissioner Flossin.
Here.
Commissioner Lepley is absent this evening. Commissioner Simpson.
Here.
Commissioner Turner.
Here.
City Manager Levin.
Can I get a motion to excuse Commissioner Lepley?
I move to excuse Commissioner Lepley from tonight's meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed, carried. Moving on to communications, I need a motion to receive and file the monthly activity reports and the Marine City area fire authority run report.
So moved.
Support.
Any questions or concerns on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed, carried. Public comment, anyone in attendance is welcome to address the City Commission. Please state your name and address, and please limit your comments to five minutes.
Bill Haas, 203 Pleasant, 215 Harrell. Man, Mr. Mayor, you know, when you first came in, supposed to, you know, code enforcer rental properties, you know, actually, I'd like to start taking pictures of some rental properties, some prominent people that, you know, Chamber of Commerce people that own properties that have been trashed in the neighborhood for lots of years. Not so much trash, the garbage sidewalks, you know. Like I say, you want to hammer everybody, but the first first should be there, people making money off their property. You know, I got a thing in the fence, I came here and spanked you people a little bit last week. Mr. Simpson, you understand why I'm angry? Did you hear what happened at the school? Ring a bell, ring a bell, the same. You asked you look into something the year before, same damn little girl, things went down bad. Yeah, I know. Figure, you know, figures, people work for places, they hire standards, you know, looking out for the people, people in the neighborhoods. It gets frustrating coming up here, had the fence, had the letter for my fence, you know, I put a fence down, I took care of the problem, everybody's happy, I get to fix my fence, you know. Called Fager, I was trying, trying to get Fager on a class action lawsuit against the city so we can clean house a little bit, take our business, you know, because nothing gets done. It's amazing, you know, city ain't got no money, paying everybody's pensions, we ain't got no money. Where does it go? Can't take care of, you know, we have a schedule for the DPW, hey. When you're paying these kids to go out cut grass and stuff, should be on schedule, ain't too many rodents that grow crazy. It just amazes me. And, like I say, frustrated, the cop thing that went down the other day, whatever. Leave them in a house, anywhere else, you're going to take them down. You know, we got, you know, Mr. Turner made a comment last week, for 12 years, we wanted to do something with 300 Broadway, finally did. Now, hell, them were your boys back in 2006, Lepley, Mycroft, you know, move forward, let's move forward. We got rid of the people, we did have a plan, rip it down, spend it, you spent a million dollars, million dollars, we could have put something there. You know, there was a plan, yeah, it's a historic building, you still got the downtown, you know, worried about the downtown, rich people, they got their own page, you know, it used to be a Chamber of Commerce page until they kind of let Sherry Foulters keep the post up too long where somebody wanted to call me a bullying bill, you know, then all of a sudden, it wasn't Chamber of Commerce. You know, we need to start taking care of problems, I'll park my truck back downtown, you know, March 17, this Saturday, not going to put signs up, but I will start putting my truck back downtown, let people know the things that have happened in this town. You know, it's like, you know, city manager, I call it inbreeding the pals. You know, city manager says, I wouldn't call it that, well, it's scratching each other's back. You know, like I say, Georgia Keith, Mary Ellen, you know, all these people have been around a long time, Mary Ellen's never come up with a plan, that's the bean counter, that's the, that's the main thing in this, you know, you got, you got someone taking care of numbers, setting plans, what plans have been set? Any plans been set, you've been here 20 years, as long as I've been here, 22, 24, 25 years, same as everybody else. You know, I see pictures of Dan, Dan Mycroft Santa Claus, back when there was some issues in this city. Issue, issues, I reached out to them, look at your wife's Facebook post, I know you read it, because when it came back to me, it said, oh, you must be talking to the wrong people. Facebook post, a little square in the corner, you punch it to see who you're talking to. I didn't have the wrong people. But it's just amazing, yeah, I know, it's hard to follow, you know, because there's so much, so much going on in this town, Mr. Avery, some of your friends, some of your friends you hang out with, if everybody knew the actual truth, some of the real truth, then we, then we see how long you guys have been around.
Hello, Tom Verton, 560 Water Street, want to address Bridge Street parking. We submitted designs, have been working on this hotel almost two years, we're opening in three weeks, and it's just kind of amazing that we're going to take a vote on if we're going to have parking, city parking on Bridge. Original drawings that we submitted showed that area identified as valet parking. You know, we, we got a hotel that we need a place for our guests to pull over, come in, see if there's a room available, hopefully maybe bring their suitcases in. At that point, they'll get a signed parking, we got 36 parking spots in the back, we get a signed parking to move their car. So I would ask this board to consider, you know, that we've tried to do our part to, you know, we didn't have to supply any parking, but we got all the parking we could possibly get, but to run a functional hotel, it seems like we need to have a place, I don't care if you want to call it 15-minute parking, or call it valet parking, or just so people have a place that they can pull off the road, go in and check on the hotel if there's rooms available or not, and that's kind of what we're looking to try and use it for. We went to ZBA with the same plans, it showed this, as we always call it in the plans, valet parking. But, you know, if the parking lot's full, because we do have a restaurant and a bar there, we might consider valet parking, because we have another parking lot down at the theater, that we possibly can park more cars there. Again, but we need a spot where they can pull without causing problems. Also, I like to, there was never parking there when Tahoons was, had their building there, it was, it was their driveway, you know, so it's not like we're losing any, any spots, so. So they were on the plans, I got the plans in the car if anybody wants to look at the plans, but they were always on the plans, and it seems like we should hopefully keep that for ease of operation, and possibly be able to park more cars by using it as a valet drop-off pickup area.
Mike O'Frank, 218 Pleasant Street. Two nights ago, when I went to bed, all was normal, like every other night before bed, I let my dogs inside for the night, shut my door, flipped the outside light out, proceeded upstairs, and got into bed, laid my head on my pillow without a second thought that I hadn't locked my back door. As I said, it was a normal night in Marine City, my charming, quaint, and quiet hometown. However, when I woke up and learned the news of an attempted murder that occurred the previous night, I couldn't help but think, what is happening to my traditionally very safe city? Sadly, I no longer feel my family is safe, I feel like I live in Detroit. Last night, I locked my back door. I know what some of you may be thinking, come on now, Detroit, isn't that a bit dramatic? What is it? In the past two or three years, I have steadily witnessed an increase in both crime in the city and also people's vigilance in response to that crime. Residents, for the first time I can remember, have been fearful to leave doors unlocked, and several that I have known personally have outfitted their homes and garages with full security systems equipped with 24-hour surveillance cameras. This is not the Marine City I grew up in. The Marine City I grew up in, other than the occasional kid stealing another kid's bike or somebody being busted with weed, crime was rare, and shootings within city limits were nonexistent. In the small two- and three-year window I'm talking about, we have had a police shooting resulting in death, an attempted armed robbery, and now a domestic incident, incident, as the papers term, that, that by most accounts was actually an attempted murder and should be charged as such. With a crime as big as attempted murder happening in such a small, quaint, and quiet town, you'd expect a police response that is equal to the severity of the crime. But unfortunately for the city and the wonderful men, women, and most importantly, children that reside in this town and expect its police department to keep them safe, that severe police response was deemed unnecessary by our police chief, and that terrible lapse in judgment was later condoned by you, Mr. Mayor. An intoxicated man who fired a gun multiple times only 1,000 feet from school grounds at an, at an occupied vehicle, which very easily could have killed somebody, in not only that vehicle, but in any one of the neighboring homes, was allowed to remain free until he chose to turn himself in, which he did not do until our children had already walked by his house on their way to school. It was over 12 hours until he decided to turn himself in. And why was he allowed to remain free? Because Chief Heslop said the man was too drunk to be arrested. Let me repeat that, an intoxicated, active shooter was too drunk to be arrested. The Marine City Police Department, by the Marine City Police Department. And to make this horrible lapse in ju, in judgment at best, and in my opinion, entire neglect of duty worsens, the shooter and scene of the crime was a mere 1,000 feet from the grounds of our children's school in which, that day, they were staging a walkout. Were the schools even notified of what happened? Were the schools even notified that the shooter was on the loose so close to our kids? There absolutely should have been a lockdown scenario. With all due respect, Mr. Mayor and Chief Heslop, you have failed us, you have failed your city, we deserve better, we deserve to feel safe, and most importantly, our children, whom already go to school in fear, deserve much, much better from this city's leaders. This cannot and will not be swept under the rug, people, somebody needs to be held accountable so that this never happens again. If I, if I am wrong in any of my assumptions or comments today, I sincerely hope that I am, please, please correct me, please tell all of us how exactly this judgment call was made, please tell us that there were other unseen circumstances at play, because the way in which the situation was handled, as it looks now, and from the quoted comments by the chief himself in the newspaper, we have a total and complete breakdown in adequate leadership. We need to feel like when we call the police, we will be helped. We need to trust and feel safe in our city, we need to feel like we live in a charming, quaint, and quiet town, we need to feel like we don't live in Detroit. We need answers, and we need those answers right now, not tomorrow, not next week, we need them now. There's a lot of concerned people in this city that are absolutely fearful right now, today, neighbors that weren't told what was going on, neighbors that had no clue that just next door, there was a guy with a gun intoxicated that wasn't arrested, that was just allowed to stay home. Since when do we need a warrant to go in and get somebody that has actively shot up a vehicle and a collaborating witness that has said that he threatened her? We don't need a warrant for that. To me, it was completely cowardly actions that led to that, completely cowardly, and somebody needs to be held accountable. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak?
Susan Mayberry, 191 South Bell River Avenue. I live in the same community where the shooting took place, and again, I don't know that I know the whole story, but I need to know the whole story. As a survivor of domestic abuse, we need to know that protocol was followed, and everyone was protected as it stated we were. Thank you.
Anyone else? Moving on to any approval for the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
All, any questions on the agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed, carried. Need approval for the City Commission regular minutes, March 1, 2018.
Move to approve the City Commission regular meeting minutes, March 1 of 2018, as presented.
Support.
Any corrections, solutions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed, carried. Moving on to unfinished business. Ordinance 2018-001, motor vehicle and snow removal, reintroduction, the first reading. Can I get a motion to introduce?
So moved.
Support.
Any questions on this? Because we made some changes to verbiage on it.
I think, I think we also tried to show you the history.
The only thing I know in the other one about the parking, we stated from December 1st, we don't care that we stated one that way, but not this one. It just says winter, winter month.
Okay, do you want?
Oh, two. Section 70.057.
Winter months is defined in the ordinance?
The, the other one has it defined as December 1st through March, just asking.
Yeah. It's, it's defined December.
And the only other thing is on page three, I think there's just a little typo in E in the upper part, it said, shall be permitted to park in the front yard during a, it says and declared snow.
Just take out the D.
Page three, second E. It's just a, I think, typo. See it? Yeah. I just want to mark it on the other one. Okay, yeah, that's it, that's all I saw on there.
Mr. Avery.
I notice in the, on the first page, it indicates that statement, further such dissembled motor vehicle shall not be permitted to remain outside of a building for a period in excess of 30 days on any lot used for residential purposes or on that portion of any lot within 20 feet of an abutting lot used for residential purposes. Who is going to enforce this, and who is going to make record of this? I feel I should make a motion that, we repeal the law of gravity for senior citizens because it affects us more reasonably. We probably can't enforce that either, but it carries about the same weight, doesn't it? If we aren't enforcing regulations, why are we adding more?
Anyone else? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Avery.
No.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Flossin.
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Van Nuys.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to ordinance 2018-002, parking of recreational vehicle, recreational vehicle equipment, reintroduction, first reading, could I get a motion to introduce?
So moved.
Support.
Okay, and on this one, we just changed verbiage again on. Any questions on this one?
I guess, did you get any feedback from any of the people that?
We have several in the, here tonight, and attending the meeting, they, I don't know if they want to have something to say on it.
Has everybody had a chance to review this latest recreational vehicle? Coordinates?
No, I don't know. I gave them the last meeting, nothing had been talked about, and I just got a phone call yesterday saying they're doing this tonight. I didn't follow, so. It's all posted online. Last meeting, we discussed, it wasn't on the agenda, they did not have the ready, and we heard nothing.
So none of you have had a chance to review it? Any chance we could postpone this one?
Sure.
To allow them to have the opportunity to at least review it and make sure it's, you know, I just want to make sure we're covered, that they have an opportunity at least.
That's good, I would make a motion to postpone this to our next.
We already have a motion on.
Yeah, by motion to postpone, supersede.
Yeah.
Okay.
Motion to postpone till our next regular meeting.
I'll support that, that'll give you time to be able to review.
And you're welcome to my printed copy of.
There, there's a packet online that you can get it, but we can try to get something to you so that you have it, but it is online in the commission's packets, they're all, you know, under the boards on the city site, but I just want to make sure you all have a chance to read this before it gets approved.
If you could send that to me, we can get paid for special guidance.
Yeah, can we, can we email that to those people?
I can give up my copy right now.
Yeah, and I've got a digital copy, so I'm happy to hand mine, you can leave here tonight, there's two copies right here.
All right.
I'm a high key.
So we will be addressing this at the next meeting?
Yeah.
Yes, let's move it.
And.
Motion postponed.
That's not a roll call, that's postponed, but that's just, any other questions on it? All in favor to postpone it?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 2018-003, driveway, driveways and front yard parking, reintroduction, first reading, can I get a motion to introduce?
So moved.
Any questions on this one?
I guess the only one I have is on page two, section A, it requires two sets of plans if they decide to put in a driveway. Do we really require two sets? I mean, is there a reason for that?
One, one to the owner and one to.
Oh, that's it?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions on it? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Flossin.
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Mayor Van Nuys.
Yes.
Commissioner Avery.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to the River Rec Teen Zone lease, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support.
And this is just the change on the one doorway issue, correct?
This is the, yeah, so what we decided.
Common doorway?
Not redo the whole lease, we just did an amendment to the lease, and Commissioner Hendrick, if you look.
Yeah.
The emergency siren, I added some of the stuff that you had mentioned at the last meeting.
Looks good to me.
And if I could, too, just, we did a walkthrough with the firm that's doing our architectural work, too, and addressed all that, too, with him, just so that there was a game plan of, showed him where the siren room was, and chased down some of the cable, and just so we can make sure that he was aware of that, to work around.
I heard it kind of snakes out.
It's, it's, yeah, it's, a lot of that building is, but just so you know, we, you know, we did sit on that, we did discuss that with him, and he's kind of altering one or two things, we had a laundry list of other items just to fine tune, but we chatted with that with him, and it doesn't, there's no issues there.
Roll call vote on that one also, please.
Commissioner Flossin.
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Mayor Van Nuys.
Yes.
Commissioner Avery.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving on to city office costs, estimates for the Guy Center and also Washington Life
We were able to prepare just a, in this case, a very preliminary estimate of things that we think might need to be done to the Guy Center, and if we were to relocate to Washington Life. As I said, these are very rough estimates, and enumerating some of the things, I can't say that it's all inclusive. We do have an elevator in this estimate for the Guy Center, I'm still unclear as to whether or not that would be necessary. One of the things to take into consideration is to understand that with the Guy Center improvements, it still doesn't address the issue of parking in the meeting space, so we would still be meeting here. If you take out the cost of the elevator, $75,000 to remodel the Guy Center to make that compliant to today's standards, and then Washington Life Center relocation over there, estimates of $71,000. As I said, these are very rough estimates, I just wanted to give you a general idea, whatever we decide from here, obviously, we would get more concrete numbers.
I think it's worth pointing out, too, that the dimensions just aren't there to incorporate an elevator to what would be required, you know, enough to turn a wheelchair around and back in, too, so even at that dollar figure, it still doesn't bring us into the proper measurements for someone to be able to utilize that, too, so I think that's also a part of that information that becomes important when adjudicating that, is that even if you physically have the lift there, we don't have the space to utilize that properly in that building, it's just too narrow where it would be needed.
Any other questions or concerns?
Any question about push-pull for the handicap? And one was for $8,000, and the other one was for $10,000. It's, it's a device that is attached to the door with a push-pull that I don't, I see on here, it says, put two doors in on the other one, so, but there's a big difference between those costs there, between the two.
For the Guy Center, the door is not big enough, so we have.
It's 36.
The front door? I don't know about that, do you have a measurement?
Mike, could you address that?
Sure. We had to put a lift elevator in the front door, so we would have to cut out the front of the building, put double doors in, maybe even take out two steps on the south side of the walkway going up, to put a lift in there. At the same time, that clause would have a push button, so, you know, the one door open up, so they can get the wheelchairs in, I would lift up to the second, up to the floor and back up.
One thing to take into consideration with these quotes is, you know, we're not architects or design engineers or anything, this in essence, in essence, is, is Mike and I kind of going through the building, looking at things that we know are going to need to be addressed. If we went the next step with the Guy Center, we in essence would want to have a, probably RFP for engineer, architect service to come through, and in essence, design the space for us. They're the ones that would know the regulations, what we need to do, they're the creative ones that would potentially come up with ideas that are better utilizing different locations for entrances, potentially remodeling the interior to make the space work better for any entry, exit. As I said, this, this is a rough estimate that we worked on.
36 was, the minimum is 32 for a door, 36.
The total reconstruction of the entry to.
We would have to have double doors at the front of the building now, and that price includes the push button, where the one door opening up for the handicap, to get into the lift, the lift unlocked, the two stairs, to put them on the main floor.
And then there's a mullion in the middle?
The whole section will be open. Yeah, there'll be one, it'll be 42 and 42 door, I believe, push button would be for the south door, that would open up, they would go in with the chair, get on the lift, go up, two stairs left, get back on the main floor. The other door would be just a hole open, walk up the stairs, go to main floors. The other door would be just a full open, walk up the stairs, go to main floors.
And it also doesn't take into account the secondary fire exit that was discussed at one point too, you know, and that's difficult to put a price tag on, but that would be the other concern that's not even quantified and.
We've, we've got some of the debt cost in there.
Yeah, but it's, you know, it's going to be a lot more, like you said, it doesn't include everything, but.
Yeah, so you say here, you were asked to give estimates for the cost of the staying in the Guy Center versus moving to Washington. I see your focus is on renovation costs. What, do you have an idea of rental cost at Washington?
I don't have that yet, no.
Alright, because I, obviously you have to include that.
The monthly rental.
Versus zero dollars.
And that, that would be something that we would need to negotiate a lease with them.
Okay. I guess I would just ask that you add that line item. So, I, I see your focus was on renovation, but that's a huge consideration, right?
You can leave it blank for now, but.
Zero cost at the Guy Center and whatever X amount is at Washington, so, right? Okay. Should be part of the consideration, not just renovation costs.
Why are we painting twice?
Which one?
You got repaint, repair interior, repaint, repair exterior, and then down again, we got interior wall and the exterior wall.
That's the, I'm sorry, that's for the front entrance. When you rip that whole thing out, the whole front of the building and inside wall is good to be painted. On the back wall, we cut the doorway out where the two windows are. We have to block that in, so the inside interior has to be painted there and on the exterior on that side of the building. That's the front and back.
Okay, well, that's not the way it's referenced on here. That's why I'm asking. I don't know if you necessarily have to replace the canopy. Also, wouldn't you have to do a lot of this stuff anyway in case we use this for a community center, even if you moved out?
Depends on what the future needs to be.
One thing I did find out on the building, even if the city determined to try to sell that building, the money can only be used for a community center, just so you know. It can't be used for anything else.
I think we talked about this at one of the previous meetings, that there were proceeds that were, that we got from.
Former lawyer, so I'm just taking his word for it that he looked into it and said that the only thing you could use the money for if you sold the building was a community center. Just, just.
Well, we've got our attorney. Take a look at that.
I just think a lot of these prices are just way overinflated. I mean, I found a lot of, a lot of things online that you could do that would still serve the purpose, but would be a lot more cost effective.
As I said, these, these are estimates.
Alright, if anything else, we're going to move on to the North Mary Street Manhole Reconstruction Bid. Hmm? Need a motion to consider the reconstruction bids?
Make a motion that we discuss and consider the North Mary Street Manhole Reconstruction Bid Package.
Court. Mike.
Murray Underground System, I got their qualification statements late this afternoon. They're a pretty good company. They've worked in Marysville, Platte Township, East China, Kimball Township, Port Huron, St. Clair, St. Clair County, and Elwinac, and newest jobs throughout the whole state. I think they're a qualified company to do the work and Ken, Ken Kingsley also thinks so. He works with them before and I think we got a good price.
Yeah, I wanted to see those sheets, but I know he had them.
No, that's.
So I called him.
Okay.
I called him up because my concern was that this bid came in forty thousand below the, his estimate.
Yep.
And so I had a lot of concerns whether, were they really going to be able to do that based on the fact we could have some issues down there that, you know, now he assured me that he's kind of over-engineered everything.
We did.
And he thinks that this can cover the cost.
Yep.
So, you know.
Original bid, the original quote was a hundred and eight thousand dollars for last time. And then, you know, we flexed from anywhere from a hundred and fifty-one to, you know, the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the last quote. But we, we got everything in there that we think we missed and put it back into this, this time and so it came back a lot better where, where we thought it was going to come in.
Yeah, that's.
Mr. Avery. Item three, what is audiovisual for picking up a sewer?
That's before they start.
I hope it's not power.
No, before they start any work, before they start any work, we take a camera and we'll do all the song areas so they can't get blamed for damage.
Alright, okay. It sounded strange.
Yeah, that's what that is.
Are they familiar with the, the pore?
Yes.
Soil pressure there?
Yep.
Yeah, I asked Ken all that. He said they, they were real, because that one manhole sunk a foot. And so he said, yes, they were very, very aware of the issues. And I did read in the contract that if there's any issues, they're still going to have to come back to us for any upgrades.
Exactly. If there's any cost overruns or anything, I have to come back to you anyway, so. I foresee that, I think we have all our bases covered and hopefully there's nothing to go cross over.
What's this estimate, what estimated timeframe do you think on the whole start-finish roughly?
Probably wouldn't start till sometime towards the end of April when all the frost laws go off. So, someplace near.
How long do you think it'll take? It'll depend on how bad it is?
It all depends how bad it is.
So what are we doing with the Washington Life Center to make sure that they are going to have access?
We are putting a temporary driveway on the south side.
Okay.
Gravel driveway until construction's done, and then remove the gravel and put their cement driveway back.
Okay, and you've been working with them directly to?
Yes.
Make sure they're aware of.
Yep. Once I get a schedule from them, I'll go back over there and make sure they're all set and everybody's good.
You're going to de-water first, right?
Well, there's two options we can do. If they have a long enough and tall enough trench, trench box, they can de-water as they're going. So that would be less cost owing out into the roadway, losing the sidewalks.
So then cut down the time it takes to complete the project?
Yes.
So that's what they're planning is to do it that way?
I believe so. I believe so.
Any other questions? All in favor? Oh wait, this is a roll call vote.
Question though, before we go on that, the actual motion was to discuss and consider, if we're going to approve the dollar amount, should that not be?
Yeah, that should be another motion, shouldn't it?
Okay.
Or add to your motion, this is the original motion. amend the original motion.
Alright, I amend the motion to accept the sole source, well, the bid that has been recommended, which is the lower bid.
At a hundred and forty-one thousand?
Oh.
Forty-one, one seventy-five.
To the first power.
And that's Murray Underground Systems. I would support that.
Any other questions? Roll call vote please.
Commissioner Simpson.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Mayor Vandabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Avery.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Flossin.
Yeah.
And then we're moving on to the Infrastructure Committee. We've actually got a couple applications. Hoping I can get a motion to approve. We have Joseph Moran, seven ten Pleasant Street.
We have a couple more there too.
You want to, can I do them? I can do them together? Okay. And also Trent Atterbury at three forty-eight North William Street. These are the only applications.
And Jacob.
Three.
And Jacob Bryson. Two seventy-four North Main Street.
Is that a motion? Are you looking for a motion?
I was looking for a motion.
I make a motion that we accept the applications for the boards listed here.
It's just infrastructure. That's all we're talking about.
Oh, they're all the one?
They apply for other boards which will be brought back when we have vacancies, several of them.
Okay, are they for Infrastructure Board?
The board. Any questions on it?
So are we picking all three or just two or?
It would be three to go along with Bill Flossin as our board representative and then myself, Mike.
Is one an engineer?
Yes.
Yeah, Jake Bryson is. He also sits in the, any commissioners have two?
And then to a certain extent, Mary Allen, because she'll be working with the numbers.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, carried. Moving on to maritime no-wake waiver. We need a motion to approve their no, the waiver.
So moved. Support.
This is the same one that they got last year for the.
They didn't have to have them last year. They said it's going to be for the same water ski job, but the DNR is requiring now that they have a no-wake waiver. So they simply asked that it get approved and something put on their head.
Any questions on this?
Yes. Does that put us into any liability? I mean, I don't, I can't imagine the wake is going to be a problem on these kind of boats, but I've just, suddenly we are accepting something, so, alright, if you think that's safe. Good.
Maritime Committee carries the insurance.
And it's still ultimately up to the.
Yes, but if suddenly we authorize something extra, then just, it, it looked dangerous.
It's still up to the DNR to get final approval, isn't it?
Correct. We'd have an agency approval.
Yeah, so we're just saying we're in support of that.
Any other questions? Hearing on all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, carried. Moving on to the Chairable Gaming License for the Maritime Days Festival Inc. Going to get a motion to approve.
Look to approve the Chairable Gaming License for Maritime Days, Marine City Festival Incorporated has presented to us.
Support.
Any questions on this one? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, roll call vote, I'm sorry. It's a roll call vote.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Mayor Vandabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Avery.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Flossin.
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen salt order. Mike, is this through MyDeal?
Yes. It's our yearly salt purchase. They don't set the prices until they get all the orders. My order is due by April thirteenth. Usually I pay a third of what the contractors pay for salt through MyDeal. So, same as last year. Just asking for the way the bidding. There's really no place else to buy the salt from.
Yes, Mr. Avery.
I make a motion that we waive the competitive bidding process and purchase the salt through MyDeal.
Support.
Any questions or concerns on this?
We really should separate the motions. Do one motion to waive it and then one motion to accept the.
I don't.
We're not buying it this time.
We're just waiving it.
Just leaving today.
Yeah, I thought his motion said and, and buy it through.
I gotta put my order in by April thirteenth.
Right, so we're just waiving the bid.
Yeah.
Do two motions.
Okay, I changed the motion.
We're not ordering, we're just waiving the bid, right? Or do you need both done today?
I would prefer to have both done today.
I mean, it sounded like we have to buy, but.
Yeah, but we have to do the waiver first.
Okay, so, we waive.
Okay.
To approve your actual purchase, you have to give us an amount, right?
That'd be in a future meeting?
Yes, it won't be till October though.
So today we just waive the competitive bidding?
That's the thing, I mean.
And you'll buy it from that entity when it's ready?
Right. I'll give my purchase order for two hundred tons, whatever I need, and then they'll tell me the set price, probably June or July, and then I'll get a bill then.
Right.
So I'll get the bill before I come back to you guys.
April thirteenth, you have to submit your order.
Yes.
Okay.
So I'll get the bill before I even come back to these guys.
Yeah, got it.
Yes, Dave.
Well, and even though we're waving, up for discussion, waiving of competitive bidding, all the MyDeal stuff is bid out within an inch of its life, so we actually get a lot of economies of scale. So anyone that's following along at home, you know, we, this is still, even though we're waiving our local procedure, the MyDeal has a lot more competitive bidding than we ever could as an individual, small municipality, and we would also, for some reason, that dollar amount came back astronomical, way out of proportion, we would still be able to proceed to another source. Would that be correct, Mike?
Yes.
Okay, just for clarity.
Any other questions or concerns? Right now, we're just waiving the competitive bids.
Correct.
Mayor Vandabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Avery.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Flossin.
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner. Motion carries.
Alright, now we're moving on to Craxion, to waive the competitive bid for Craxion.
Make a motion to waive the competitive bidding for Craxion. Support.
Any questions on the Craxion?
Just a discussion. We, this is something we do pretty regularly. One of the reasons why we do this is not only is it competitive for the actual product, but they allow us free use of the actual machine, which is very expensive. And Mike, I had a conversation with Mike, he pretty much gets it a good chunk of the summer to do when he can fit it in his schedule. If we were to rent this machine, it would be substantially more and we could potentially have an overtime situation because it would have to be back and that kind of stuff. So it's really a, a great program that we actually save quite a bit of money on, so it's, it's worth waiving our procedure for that.
You say I get the machine around June first, June second, and they come pick it back up in October. So I have no timeline to get the work done. I get all summer, the Senate crews out there and do it. So that's, that's what's nice about this company.
Any other concerns?
Commissioner Avery.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Flossin.
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Mayor Vandabosh.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Moving on to the Bridge Street Parking.
So, I think from Mr. Burton's request earlier, this is parking that in essence was part of a approved site plan for the Inon Water Street. On the site plan, they did call out this part of parking as, I think it was valet or loading-unloading zone, but the caveat is, is that to be able to change the time limit on that, it has to come before city commission. You guys are the approving body that has the authority to dictate the parking on that. As it stands, if you do nothing right now, it would be similar to any residential street. So that would be no parking, two to six AM, and you'd have to have a permit to park there in the winter. The bulk of Water Street, obviously, you probably remember from our last meeting that we did some of the parking south of the Inon Water Street to match most of Water Street. No overnight parking from three to six AM. So your options here, if you do nothing, it in essence would be the residential parking time limitations. And other than that, we could have a traffic control order for any type of time limit from ten minutes up until. So your options here, if you do nothing, it in essence would be the residential parking time limitations, and other than that, we could have a traffic control order for any type of time limit from 10 minutes up until no overnight parking from 3:00 to 6:00. And that's something where, based upon your decision, we will have the chief put together a traffic control order and come back at the next meeting for that.
I believe Mr. Burton indicated that this parking was to be used as a transient parking for people coming and going from the lobby area and for stock unloading and so on, so. That doesn't seem like you need overnight situations, I mean, if we don't have to change the time that is already on that spot, we just have to honor the agreement that we made to use it that way.
My concern is if we do it for one, then how many other businesses are going to come at us and ask for the same type of thing? I'm wondering, do you have any space in the rear? Do you have a door in the rear for that type of thing?
No, we have 36 spots and they're all going to be assigned spots. We don't need it overnight. We have guests checking in between, you know, after 11 o'clock. But it's the closest point to the front door. I mean, to ask people to drive around back in snowing or raining, bring your suitcase in. Idea was, they'd be closer point to the door, they get out, there's an awning there, they go into the awning, they come into the lobby, they check in, so you give them a spot to rotate their car to, because we're going to have assigned parking, so we can try and control it. So, we need a transient spot. The point at every business, I mean, this is the only hotel we have in town that has this type of budget, and which was felt out on the plan when we, you know, proposed this, so. We don't need it at night, that's for sure. You know, we want snow cloud like everybody else, so we don't lose the sheer, the cars aren't, nobody's going to park there. You know, we would like to have like a 15-minute, probably a drop-off time.
How many spaces are there currently?
My guess, three.
Three?
These wasn't the middle.
Yeah, I know, I was trying to figure out how many cars you could put in there currently.
I think three is comfortably.
So Tom, essentially, what I'm hearing is, put up a sign that says, "Guest check-in" or something, whatever, to that extent, right? So that people aren't?
When there's no parking after 11:00 to 5:00 in the morning.
Right. You're trying to, you're trying to reserve a couple of spots where people can pull in, park, check into the hotel, go to their assigned parking. They're going to be there 10, 15 minutes, whatever it takes to check in. Okay.
And again, it wasn't parked there before.
Right.
We paved it, we curved it, it was all part of the site plan.
So this is unique circumstances to your business, right? To address Commissioner Hendrick's question or concern that if we give this to you, everybody else in town's going to ask for it, but this is a unique situation. Everybody else in town is not going to have guests checking in.
Well, I think somebody should consider that we, at our cost, put in 36 parking spots.
Right.
By rights, we didn't really need to do.
Right. Not a park in the street.
Yeah, park in the street like everyone else. Both are businesses, we have.
Right.
We're paying more parking than anybody else.
So I think it's a very reasonable request.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Yes, it's, it's not looking for something that... The other businesses are in existence. They have not had this in the plan that was approved by the commission and everybody that went through this. We're honoring the commitment that was made, and this does make sense.
Anyone else? Dave?
Yeah, I can speak to, several times, the site plan came back and forth to the planning commission as it was going through the approval process, and one of the things that a lot of people liked about that plan on the board was the fact that it took a lot of the drop-off loading-unloading off of the Water Street, and that was one of the reasons why that was attractive, because it really, you know, we talked about how there could potentially be a bottleneck and a lot of that, so it, you know, in the spirit of that, I would be very much for this, because it's, you know, when we were trying to think of logistics and figure out what potential burden or benefit, you know, this project would provide, you know, we, there was a lot of diligence there to, you know, think of a way to alleviate some of the stress on Water Street, so I think, you know, we're also not physically losing spaces, because, you know, as mentioned before, you know, these spaces didn't exist, so I think it, you know, I don't think that we should be labeling it in parking or anything like that, but I think if we consider a parking order that says 15-minute parking, there's not a lot of other areas right there that you can get in and out in 15 minutes, so I think, you know, that seems to me that that would address that, that concern, but I wanted to speak to the benefit of having seen that at the planning commission a number of times and physically talking through how, how the traffic pattern works, because a good deal of time was spent on that.
Yes, Lisa.
So then, do you want us to allow you to draft up a traffic control order?
That's what we'll be looking for, yeah.
Yes.
That, that one area was greenbelted one time, so there was an area that was grass in there, but what I'm wondering is, who's going to enforce the ordinance, because you're going to have the bar and the restaurant also, how are you going to stop them people from parking in that loading-unloading zone?
We have video cameras, we've got somebody there 20 minutes of seven to monitor it.
So it's going to be your enforcement? It's going to be your enforcement?
Well, what I was going to say is, other than 15-minute parking, I would appeal to you to try and put on that it's hotel pickup drop-off 15-minute minimum, because we don't want to encourage bar people to park there either, because it defeats the purpose. I mean, if you have everybody, you think they can park in there? So, well, we could put that sign up if you would allow us to say. But the enforcement, we're not looking, we would like the salt enforced, you know, it's hotel. It's the same, we're going to have the same problem on our parking lot right now, we have people parking there all the time, they're not hotel guests, we're going to have to enforce it, I mean. You know, we're going to probably have a towing service and we've got cameras and we can document it, you know, we're taking license plate numbers and record the cars and ship them to parking lot.
But the difference is, that's private property, this is city property. We don't want to have citizens trying to enforce parking on city streets. We've had problems already with that. So it has to be through our normal traffic situation of enforcement.
The traffic control orders, that's what it would do, is give you the three spaces for 15 minutes, or that's all we're looking at? Okay.
Any other questions or concerns on it? So we need a motion to instruct the city manager to, do you need a motion for it?
I don't necessarily need a motion, we'll bring a traffic control order, it sounds like most people seem agreeable to 15 minutes.
You understand the intent, you can communicate that.
Yeah.
Okay. Common sense, once again.
All right, moving on then to ordinance 2018-004. Amendment regulating purchase and consumption and possession of alcohol by minors.
Yeah. This is, this is just the state law requiring new language for your MIT ordinance. It's a minor in possession. Apparently minors drink, and they're going to give them a little more leeway before they get hammered. So it's, it's a new state requirement, it's just an ordinance we have to put in place.
What do you mean by before they get hammered?
No, not that. There's a, there's a little, there's a little more leeway before things rise to the level of misdemeanor for their permanent record. There's civil infraction, step now before they, not hammered drinking, before they have the blemish of a misdemeanor on their record. You know, minor in possessions, you want to go up on a Monday morning following a Michigan State football game, there's a line about two city blocks for the weekend minor in possession tickets, and unfortunately, some of them can rise to misdemeanors, which infringe on their records for quite a while as they graduate and mature and become job seekers, so there's a little, little thought put into this.
I would introduce ordinance 2018-004. Support.
Motion in support, any other questions on it? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen?
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash?
Yes.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to financial business, dispersments including payroll of $401,283,44 cents.
I'm going to approve dispersments including payroll of $401,283,44 cents. Support.
Any questions on dispersments? Hearing on roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Claussen?
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash?
Yes.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Moving on to the preliminary state financial statements, can I get a motion to receive and file the preliminary financial statements?
Motion to receive and file financial statements?
Support.
I second that.
Any questions on the statements? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Moving on, city manager's report.
At the planning commission meeting, I've been working in the loop with the department heads on the budget. I have spoken with Jim Heslop about the situation that we had and further investigating that. Obviously, with it being an open case right now, it's not really something that we're at liberty to discuss, but I am taking it very seriously and, and doing my due diligence. Also handed out almost 70 pages worth of ordinances to the planning commission for homework for their April meeting. The April meeting, I won't be in attendance, however, our planning consultant from Wade Trim will be there. It's just a preliminary discussion, the first time that it's going to be on the planning commission, for them to work with the planner and talk through some of the potential issues. I've also provided the attorney with a copy for it, so hopefully, we can get ahead of some of the attorney issues before it gets to city commission. That's it.
Third question. Susan, do you think this might get back to us? Any idea? Rough timeframe.
So, April planning commission is when they're going to have preliminary discussion.
First, first readings.
Well, some of it's zoning ordinance, which is under the purview of the planning commission, where they would, in essence, have their first review of it before it comes to you. I don't know, we haven't really talked about having special meetings to get it through the system a little bit faster.
So two months with the planning commission?
Yeah.
Before, at least.
Yeah, at least. Yeah, two months.
It's been a lot of drafts back and forth with Susan and I and Wade Trim, I mean, it's a pretty big package, and it's not something we necessarily could have parsed out one or two, because there's so much interconnectivity between a lot of these ordinances. I mean, some of them could have stood alone, but there's a lot of interconnectivity and it's taken a while.
Mr. Davis said you had your input on this stuff, yeah?
I received them a couple, a couple days ago, last, tell me, last week, so I'll have my, she gave me a deadline for my input. They like to get my input upfronts, because I don't like to spoil things after they've already. But there are some legal requirements that are going to be mandatory, there's just some things that have to be in these zoning ordinances that we're missing.
All right, so at best, it's probably June timeframe for this.
I would think so.
All right.
You are a little bit out ahead, the staff has done a great job with the planner of, we're already ahead as we're handing them this, we're, you know, we're not, we're not, we're not giving them stuff from fresh, you know, I mean, we're kind of ahead of the game already, so.
And that will have the rental inspection program?
Yeah.
I got my packet on Monday, and I made it through all 70-some-odd pages, and it, there's quite a few in regards to, in fact, it pretty much reinvents that program, it's, it's, there's a lot of good things in the form of that it is now, so.
Mr. Avery?
I just wanted to say that that timeframe should not be any problem. I think we'll be busy in April.
The only reason I ask is there's a couple of things that we've.
Budgets.
Put off for a long time that are going to be seasonal, and are now going to be into June before we even look in.
Yeah, the signs and the sidewalk cafes, things like that, that's in there.
I know.
And it's all in this version.
That's where I was going.
I know.
You have to have all your public hearings and everything by the state laws, so that takes time.
Unfortunately, we don't have a staff planner, so working with our planner, we're not the only account.
Sure, you'll do the best you can.
We certainly are.
Anyone else for the city manager, any questions? Moving on to commissioner privilege.
All right. It's alphabetical, I assume, yeah. I used the telephone number that was shown on the city website for cutting off the delivery of the dreaded red packages. It worked very well, I gave them the two addresses that I was interested in, and that system worked, so thank you for setting that up. Just a simple polite message was all that was necessary. They don't evidently talk, they just accept the message, and it happened. I would also like to use a few moments here. March 4th marks the anniversary of the beginning of government under the U.S. Constitution in 1789. It seldom gets any popular attention, but it certainly deserves some, especially in an area when we are moved so far from the very limited government that the Constitution authorized. One useful way to mark this uncelebrated date might be to remember what James Madison, the father of the Constitution, had to say. I have a few very short quotes. "I am dogmatically attached to the Constitution in every clause, syllable, and letter. The meaning of the Constitution should be fixed and known. The legitimate meanings of the Constitution must be derived from the text itself. And I cannot lay my finger on that article of the Constitution which granted a right to Congress of expending on objects of benevolence the money of their constituents." Thank you.
Mr. Claussen? I'm good, and I hope everybody has a good weekend this weekend coming up, so be careful.
I've got a few things. I want to remind anyone that's interested in following us along, our budget workshops are coming up on April 24th through the 26th, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the fire hall here in this room. So that's our annual workshops as we work through that. Oftentimes, people wait to the very end to come to us, I would encourage anyone that's interested in following along or expressing concerns or opinions to attend those, so we can take that information into account as we're working through that. So that's April 24th, 5th, and 6th, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. in this room. So, I want to thank everyone that donated to the Patronissee fundraiser for the River Rec Teen Zone. We've reached the fundraising goal, actually exceeded that. We set our target at $30,000, we've already exceeded that, we still have some time left, so it looks that we're going to receive that match of $30,000 for the River Rec Teen Zone. I hesitate to say that we've reached our funding goal, because obviously, $60,000 doesn't renovate even the building, let alone create for sustainable programming or staff members, so we just had to pick a target that we can fundraise towards, because if we, say, went $50,000 and we didn't reach that, we'd get zero match money, so that's why that was strategic and important. All that to say, thank you very much for everyone who contributed, we'd be happy to receive any more contributions, we're also very happy to receive anyone that's willing to give of their time and expertise in any number of areas, we're putting together some programming that, so I would encourage anyone interested. So, I would encourage anyone interested in being involved in that or just anyone interested in finding out more information about our group to, please feel free to reach out to myself or anyone on the group. We'd be happy to share what we have going on. We're getting closer and closer and that's a great thing. And as I indicated earlier, that we've been through the building with folks working on our plans and we're really starting to fine tune that. And we're taking an approach that we'd rather get in the building first and then start developing programs as opposed to having everything pie in the sky, perfect. We're not making the Taj Mahal there, we're looking for a safe space that we can begin programming and expand from there. So, we're excited for that. And, yeah, as I spoke to earlier too, with the Planning Commission ordinances, it does, I want to make aware that it does include that rental inspection program that we've been talking about for a long time and pretty much rewrites it. There's, I think it was at least six pages in there that addresses that, so it's quite a bit. So, in my almost decade on the Planning Commission, we haven't even gone through the ordinances, so I'm glad that we're finally able to start making some progress and look at these things because some of that stuff has been outdated for 30-some years and then some. So, I'm happy that we're given that opportunity, but we don't get a lot of visitors at the Planning Commission. So, for those of you who don't know, planning is a slow process because it's pretty tedious and, you know, as Commissioner Clausen indicated, there's timelines and hearings and associated with a lot of things, so unfortunately, you can't accelerate it. But I'm glad that we're really starting to look forward to that. But also looking forward to, we have the SEMCOG meeting coming up next week, I'm looking forward to attending that. That's the Southeastern Michigan Council of Governance. And that's going to be held at McCombe Community College Lorenzo Center. I signed up to hear one of the presentations about road funding and public act, so I'm looking forward to sharing some information maybe down the road that comes with that. And that's all I have for today, thank you.
I want to thank the couple of people that spoke up on that incident from the other night. It is very serious. I understand, I'm glad that our city manager is taking this seriously enough that she's looking into the situation. I also have a lot of questions and concerns on the issue and I understand that because it's open, we can't really discuss much, but I'm hoping that in time when we finally get a lot of the answers, that we can have some type of town hall meeting to address this and get a lot of answers for the people in this community so that they can be assured that we are handling things properly. Thank you.
I agree. I mean, it's something we've got to look at seriously, what, you know, what happened and debrief through the, and it's something we can't even look at right now until the legal avenues are taken care of and with defense attorneys and all that, we can't comment on it right now. But I didn't even hear about it until middle of the day or late in the day, so I had to play a little catch-up. St. Patty's Day this weekend, so everybody enjoy and have a safe, safe weekend. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.